Being five fifteen, January thirty twenty twenty five, I'd like to call the planning commission. Order to stand for. Okay, we'll call been taken. Wait, looking for motions without the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion was made and seconded. There any additions or corrections? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's carried. Looking for a motion to adopt. The approval of the December twelfth twenty twenty four planning commission minutes is read in your packet.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's carried. Okay. Owner of glass was in Bloom Street House looking to expand. We need a zoning approval. Dave will take that.
So, we're not here to take action on this tonight, but the owner likes, wants to expand his business there. He's looking to add those four buildings there. This is backed by the airport of business. So.
Quick trip.
Uh, yep. Currently, believe it or not, it's zone R two. That's something we kind of missed when we did our mapping. But we'll have to change the zoning on that to allow him to add those buildings in. But what we wanted to do tonight was kind of get an idea from the planning commission if they would be willing to look at maybe him, allowing him to do that. Basically, we want to make sure there is any pushback for him to put these buildings in. He has to order in about six months ahead of time. Unless we thought, we had a consensus from the commission that there's something that they didn't want to see happen. He was going to kind of take it his own risk to maybe go ahead and purchase summer, some of those buildings so that he can have them here in six months. So, he's got to go through the zoning process to change that. And then that would be allowed use in the industrial area that we're posing. Kind of want to run that by the commission to make sure there wasn't some pushback there that would not have him kind of move this plan forward that he's proposing.
What's to the north of that? Chad, could you call it?
Yeah, I was, I was gonna ask you.
Our substation.
Oh, your substation.
If you see the businesses around there, the zoning would allow for what he's proposing. It's just the fact that it was zoned R two that we have to go through the planning efficient process to make, to make that happen. So.
Yeah. Can we see a street view there, I believe? Would that be High Street? I'm not sure. No, it's the next street or.
Yeah, these are those hoop houses not too far down from the quick trip.
Yeah. Okay, that's what I thought. They had the big fence there anyway. So, we're not seeing a lot of. Yeah, perfect.
He is here. If anybody has any questions, be happy to speak. All right, so we'll make this an agenda item probably for the next meeting.
Well, to be crystal clear, I mean, it needs a zoning change, so there's a process for that. There's petition process in our zoning code to do this. This is just a cursory, hey, you guys have heartache over it to, you know, it's a dead issue off the bat. But there's a process that has to go through that to, to really allow it. So, it's, it's got to be rezoned to allow that use. So, you can't just say yes until it's official. And then your zoning code, that's an ordinance that has to go through council. So, even though this group might nod their heads, it's got to go to the city council. You have to do it and change, so.
So.
There's layers.
What zoning, would you take that to as what the other places around there are or what?
There's. We'll have to look at our current zoning code, but we're also looking, and we have a conversation that we're going to have in a while. Looking at our new zoning code. We have zoning designations kind of figured out for, to allow this type of use. But you guys need to determine whether that use is allowed on that parcel. So, processing things that we had to go through. So, we'll either have to AC if it's something we want to rezone immediately with our, to allow in our current zone. And we've got to bring that back to you guys to consider. Or is it something that we're going to get done quickly enough with our zoning plan, our zoning process to, to be rezoned? But again, you know, nothing is final until you guys make a recommendation for an ordinance and that's got to go to council for that.
Chad. To the north, how deep is that city well that's right there?
To the north, the substation?
Yeah, that was a couple hundred feet at least.
But I think so, right now is it's a matter of, do you guys really have heartache and it's a no go? Or is it like, something we'll consider to continue, continue looking for?
You got, you got five council members here already, so. And I'm, everybody's shaking their head, so I'm, I'm thinking it's not going to be an issue with council.
Yeah, I don't see, I mean, they already own the property. They already have a business on it. Yeah, it needs to be properly zoned. Oversight on our part, we need to get it fixed, but I don't see why we would want to prohibit a business from expanding. That doesn't sound right, so. Yeah.
So, since we're not taking action tonight, it was just to make sure there wasn't a lot of pushback for him to kind of at least at his own risk, kind of move this plan forward, so.
I think it will, will make a wonderful addition.
Get those pretty flowers out there and it'll be all good. So.
It certainly wouldn't run.
Any more discussion on it? Okay, we'll move on to continue to view of the draft language for zoning rewrite with Vanda Wall and Associates. Put in here with you guys.
Just. Trying to fit in here. Okay. All right. Well, hello all, it's been several months, but we have been hard at work. In particular, working with city staff to fine tune the first part of the ordinance that you had in your packet. In addition to that is a set of questions that we identified from some of the discussions we had with staff. Obviously, there's an opportunity tonight as well. If there are other areas or questions that you'd like to discuss, we certainly can. And again, this is not the end of the discussion by any means as well. So, we were here last towards the end of summer when we were talking about those land use tables and the zoning bulk dimensions related to some of those new districts that we were developing. And we talked through a couple of those different policy questions at that time. Then we formulated that into what is a significant part of part one that you have before you today. But spelled out a lot more of the details, which I'll get into a little bit. And then as we move forward, just this afternoon, staff and I and myself and Scott, we sat down. We started working on this draft zoning map. So, that's, you know, the implementation of how these tools come to life in terms of the text. And so, that's what we would envision bringing back to you in the next couple of months to start reviewing that together. And then there will be a part two as well. So, we're on the, the path forward, we're on the journey forward, but there is still some work we need to do. Sort of in the grand scheme of the picture of the process, we've looked at this before, but we're in that middle sort of section of, you know, reviewing the draft ordinance together with city staff, planning commission. Our goal is still to get this done in the summer of, of this year. And so, that's the path we're sort of moving towards at this timeframe. You guys are all familiar with what is zoning. It regulates the use of land, particularly when new development is proposed. But I wanted to highlight a little bit, just refresher on the goals of why we're here and why we're doing this. We're trying to modernize this code. We're trying to improve a lot of errors that we see in the existing code, whether that's inconsistencies or just hard to find information, making it easier, user friendly. And then we also want to bring it into compliance with state and federal code and laws and then implement the comprehensive plan. So, just a little refresher, something you guys are all familiar with. Part one, and the reason we break up the code into two parts is, is there's a lot of information. There's a lot of volume of information. And so, articles one through five is what we're calling part one. That's highlighted on the screen here. Part two is what we will get at later, at a later date. But we'll go through each one of these articles in, in terms of what's in there. The introduction, not a lot of interesting things there. It establishes the zoning ordinance itself. It provides the purpose statement. It's the general overarching sort of, this is the city zoning code. We, we also have, you know, state and federal codes we need to work within. We also have the rest of the municipal code we have to work within. You know, there, it's, it's pretty high level, it's pretty general in nature. As you move to article two, that is the establishment of the zoning districts themselves. So, basically, it establishes, this is each zoning district and its purpose statement as well. And then additionally beyond that, we have it outlined where the planned unit development process is included in each of the overlay zoning code, zoning districts. The majority of these are already established today within other sections of the code. So, all we're doing is making a reference to those being in, working in conjunction with zoning, like the floodplain ordinance, for example, or the wetland ordinance. So, we're, we're, we're establishing the zoning districts in this, in this chapter. Now, what feeds directly into that is each land use that's allowed or permitted within each individual zoning district. That's where you get to article three. You have the big table at the forefront of that where it really says a, a lot of what we looked at before in sort of those big texts or Excel document formats. This is in a Word document format, but basically, you know, all the permitted conditional and all the, the land uses in zoning districts are there. We've also included a variety of diagrams throughout that to try and articulate and illustrate different standards. And then there are land use definitions within this entire article. So, you can reference what we mean by each land use and if there was a specific requirement for that land use, all, all in this section. Article four is the bulk dimensional standards for the most part. This is again, something we looked at in the last meeting. The big tables are really the meat and the heart of this. It's got all your setbacks, it's got all your dimensional standards by zoning district. So, hopefully, between that land use table and that bulk dimension table, the average person using or needing to use a code has to look in, in those two tables and that's about it for the most part. Obviously, there's other things we need to build into the code, but that's the goal. And then the unique situations are also outlined in the bulk regulations where there are certain exceptions for small minor adjustments to, you know, yard setbacks and things. For the most part, you guys are never going to have to deal with any of those things. But for them, that helps give clarity, in particular for Dave and Chad, when they're asked a question or they're presented with a situation to have sort of those clear cut sort of expectations for where those unique situations occur. Finally, as part of article one, nonconforming situations. So, you guys have probably all heard the term nonconforming situation. It's basically anything that doesn't meet the zoning regulations, but it's built, it's constructed, it's being used today, it's, it's out there today. So, with the existing code, you know, part of the discussion we already had today and looking at the map, we found some nonconforming situations that exist today, AKA the, the greenhouse you just looked at. No, that's a nonconforming situation. So, there's some that exist today. There's some that are going to be established with the new code as we adopt it. But we'll talk a little bit further as to how we're proposing to address that and approach that from a land use perspective, but it's slightly different than the structures and the parcel configuration. So, we've come up with these six sort of policy questions and, and some of them are policy questions. Some of them are just like, we want you to understand the approach that we're taking, ask questions about it if you do have them and have an opportunity for you to have a dialogue back and forth. Hopefully, you've had a chance to look through it. I know, I'm not anticipating that you've memorized the entire thing verbatim. That is not the, the expectation by any stretch. But we do want to provide an opportunity for you guys to, to start feeling comfortable with what's in there and modify this, obviously, if there's a need to, in relationship to some of these bigger topics. And then, like I mentioned at the end, if there's anything else that you would like to talk about, feel free. We'd like to take our time here tonight. So, I think I've talked a little bit about this in previous meetings, but the land use approach right now in the code is that there's sort of the scattered definitions throughout the, the definition section. But in addition, there's regulations and standards sort of scattered throughout the code. And what we're aiming to do is sort of funnel that all into article three. So, you've got the table with all of the zoning districts and the land uses. But you've also got every single requirement that, that's unique or specific to that individual land use. And they're organized by residential, mixed use, commercial, industrial, if you've had a chance to look at it. The organization that we think makes a lot of sense. What we're aiming to do is basically create consistency for the application side of this, for the understanding of the property owner side of this, but also provide some flexibility in that we can have multiple land uses occur on the same lot, or we could have a single land use occur on a single lot. And the code allows for that flexibility to take place, which I'll explain a little bit more here with an example. So, as you come into town, off the, off the highway on the south side, you can see this exact example. There's the quick trip on what would be the east side of the road and an office clinic on the west side of the road. Both of these two properties are most likely going to be zoned corridor mixed use, which is our sort of commercial corridor oriented zoning district. Both of these land use situations are going to be permitted by right, but they're two different situations. At the top, the corner, that's a single land use. It's office, it's clinic, there's nothing else that I know of from apparent outside that's happening. That's going to have to just meet the single office land use requirement component of the code if they were establishing this new today. Likewise, the gas station, the, the quick trip is going to be permitted as well. There's just a couple of additional steps because there's multiple things occurring on the lot. One being the outdoor, you know, vending from the actual pumps, the gas pumps. We call that in vehicle sales and service, so that's happening outside. Obviously, there's the indoor sales component, which is occurring within the structure, the convenience store. And then oftentimes, there's an outdoor sales component, whether that's ice or firewood or vending or whatever else. So, all of these are permitted, but they do have some unique provisions, standards that need to be met, like buffering or fencing or, or those types of things to try and account for the different components of, you know, a drive through in particular is something we want to, we want to be careful with. We don't want to just have, you know, cross traffic occurring in front of it. And so, we need to pay a little bit more attention, we need to have a little bit more standards in that space. And so, that's how the new code is sort of oriented, is that while we're allowing both of these things to occur, both the, the single and the multiple land use scenario, we do have specific regulations that would have to be met in relationship to each of those subset of land uses that may be occurring on the property. And I. Maybe that is obvious, maybe it isn't obvious, but I, I wanted to explain that before we get too far down the road. Are you comfortable with this approach? Do you have questions about this approach? Good. So, now we'll talk a little bit about a slightly different component of the code. This is going to be new. When I'm talking mixed use, I'm talking about a residential component and a nonresidential component within the same building. So, that's what I'm talking about as a mixed use building. Most often you see this in the downtown corridor. Maybe it exists in other areas, but I don't think so as far as New London is concerned. Existing code, it isn't perfectly spelled out exactly what a mixed use building is supposed to be, where it's supposed to occur. Obviously, I think downtown is really the only place where it's specified. What we're proposing to do is allow mixed use buildings to occur in a variety of different zoning districts. We talked a little bit about that before. But have some specific requirements for these types of developments so that we can ensure what we're trying to achieve with allowing them to occur in these different areas. In particular, what we're proposing is a minimum thirty-three percent of the ground floor needs to be a nonresidential use, most likely a commercial type of use. And this is most often what you would see downtown where you have the storefront and then maybe behind the storefront or above is where the residential, and most of the time that's in an apartment kind of style format. What we're also proposing is in the downtown district in particular that we're requiring that nonresidential component to be along the front facade or the street facing facade. So, we retain those storefronts in, in that specific area, in the downtown area. So, we're allowing for the flexibility for these two things to occur in the same building. Generally, it's that thirty-three percent rule that we've drafted. And what we've done is we've drafted this based off of what we're seeing in other communities where this product is a lot more popular. It hasn't been as much in New London outside of downtown. It might, it might be though, in the near future with some of the newer stuff you guys have been looking and seeing. So, we need to have requirements for it. We want to retain those storefronts downtown. But obviously, a standalone commercial building is still permitted, just like we just looked at those other two examples. This is just when there's a residential component in the building. So, generally, does that make sense? Are we comfortable with that approach? We talked a decent amount with staff and, and they felt comfortable with this. But since it is new, we want to make sure you guys have your questions answered, if you have any. Okay.
That's good.
So, here is another thing that was specifically a part of the comprehensive plan that talked about exploring accessory dwelling units. What we mean by accessory dwelling units is that there is a, an additional unit, dwelling unit, living area within a lot that has an existing primary unit. So, most often, what you would think of is a single family home or two family home. And there would be an additional unit on that property that would be accessory to the principal structure. Now, this could be within the structure itself or detached. So, you can see, like, the detached is probably maybe what you think of the most often as an accessory dwelling unit. That's like in a, in a side garage or above the detached garage. But it could be attached, it could be in the basement, it could be above the attached garage. There are alternative ways in which this configuration could take place. And so, we're, we're starting broad, I guess. We're starting with, you know, that as the general rule as it's drafted. But we want to get your opinion on, you know, whether you want a separate structure prime or within the primary unit. Currently, accessory dwelling units are not permitted in the city. The existing ordinance has these, the quarters for accessory households, which basically means you can work and live in the same place, and that's what we see some of those mixed use buildings downtown looking like. But it's not really across the residential neighborhoods, if you will, from that perspective. So, there's a lot on the screen here. I want, I'm, I want to go through it relatively slowly. What we're proposing is that accessory dwelling units are permitted in basically your residential zoning districts. So, this would be the single family and the combination of the mixed residential, low, medium. And so, there would be a maximum of one that could occur on the lot in addition to the existing principal structure, maximum of one total family. The family definition will be in part two, but that, that'll limit the number of occupants to a family in, in that definition. What we're proposing is if, whether it's in the building itself, the, the principal building, or it's detached, that it meets the principal setbacks, meaning that we've drafted accessory structure setbacks, like for sheds and stuff like that, that you can use a lot more of the lot. But the principal structure setbacks are a little bit bigger, meaning that they need to fit within that framework of those principal setbacks, meaning the side, rear and front. The size, we can regulate this by a certain cap in terms of square footage, if that's a preference of this group. What we're proposing right now is that basically it cannot be larger than the principal structure, meaning it's accessory to the principal structure. So, if you think of a thousand square foot, single family home, that means that you could have an eight hundred square foot accessory dwelling unit because it's smaller than that size. Now, if we wanted to put a cap on there, we certainly could, if you feel more comfortable with that. But that's just one approach that we could use. If it's within the building itself, it, it needs to have an entrance that's not on the front facade. So, it would be on the side, it would be on the rear. That's something to, to try and maintain sort of the residential character of the neighborhood, if that's something we're interested in. And having that detached structure only occur in the side or the rear yard, meaning behind the, the facade of the building, if it takes place there. We, we've required a paved connection, meaning, you know, a sidewalk, a driveway, something to that effect. And this is the big one. There's no new parcel created associated with the accessory dwelling, meaning that the owner owns both structures. It's all part of one property. And so, the owner could live in the accessory dwelling unit, the owner could live in the primary house. But the owner is a component of owning both structures, they're not sold separately. And so, we think that's something valuable where you're not going to separate the ownership of those two things. You're going to keep them as one under a contiguous ownership. We could require additional parking, if that's something you'd like. Right now, we have it drafted that no additional parking beyond the minimum that's required for the principal dwelling unit. And then another big one is, right now, we have it drafted as approval is by zoning permit and building permit at the staff level, so meaning it's permitted. Now, there's alternative approaches to this, one being a conditional use. But as we've talked in other times, a conditional use is really difficult for you all to say no to if they're meeting these set of standards. So, if we develop a set of standards that we're all comfortable with, then I would advocate that we go with a permitted approach where staff can approve them because those standards are inherently what we're looking to see. So, I know I've thrown a lot at you here. We've talked a little bit about the accessory dwelling units before. This is a topic that's going to continue to come up, but generally speaking, we wanted to provide you with a set of standards that have been developed from a variety of different communities that we've worked with. Some things that have worked, some things that haven't worked in terms of trying to filter it out. Basically, retain the neighborhood character of where they go and how they're integrated, but allow for flexibility in some respect to how they might be developed based on what you have on the lot. Whether that's if you have a detached garage and it makes the most sense there, or maybe you have a finished basement and it makes the most sense there. Trying to give a little bit of flexibility to meet the housing demand and the housing crisis that we have before us. So, I will go back to my big list here, but does anybody have any questions, any thoughts on, I like this, I don't like this, that kind of thing?
With that parking. Are we, have you seen the possibility of creating more, more people parking on the street? Are we, have you seen the possibility of creating more, more people parking on the street? Because if there's not, if there's only one driveway and the driveway is only so big and there's another family in that dwelling. Where are they gonna park like in the winter when we have no parking on the city streets?
On the lawn?
No, I mean, it's a valid point. Parking for, we could require an additional parking space. Associated with an accessory dwelling unit off-site and that would be most likely occur in the driveway. And so if that's something that you'd like to see, I have no problem with that. I was just trying to make it a little bit more flexible to start with, but if.
What do you see as a drawback from adding additional parking? Do you see that?
Additional cost.
Well, I mean, as far as the zoning part of it, is that an issue that the people, the cost would maybe? So they don't do that, but as far as, I, I still go with the parking. I mean, where are they gonna park? I mean, are they gonna park this way on front of their house, you know, or in the winter or?
Yeah, I think some driveways are naturally going to be big enough to handle it without an issue. But other driveways would have to be expanded in some capacity to handle an additional car, whether it's on the side or, you know, rear-loaded, whatever that may be. And so that's a requirement we could have. I don't have a problem with it. It's just an additional cost. If, if your driveway isn't big enough already to accommodate that, you're gonna have to make it work, basically.
Yes, my question you would be, have you seen another municipality that have that, no additional parking? Have you seen the issues of becoming like? Not would say a junkyard, but people parking on the grass in front of the house or alongside a garage on the grass?
Yeah, I mean, that, that occurs in two-family, multifamily, single-family homes all over. Part of it is an enforcement component, part of it is. You could tell the people the standards a million times, they would follow that kind of thing, but.
I, I was just gonna say that in New London, whether it's an ADU or what we have going on now. You are seeing people parking, their whole entire front yard is their parking lot at this point. I, I mean, it, it, it's already a thing. So if we're going to look at doing something about that, it needs to be not just for ADU. It needs to be broader. Cause it, it's, it's already happening, happening in single-family dwellings.
See it be in the summertime would be such an issue, but once we come to November first, you can't park on the street. Then where they're gonna go?
I was thinking about maybe flipping it instead of saying that you require additional parking. Maybe flipping it and saying that during the process that they have to justify that the parking is adequate that they have. Or they have a plan to add it to satisfy the need without having on-street parking, without having to park in the front, you know. Grass, you know, lot, you know, instead of, cause if you, if someone's got a big enough park, big enough driveway and you say, oh, you gotta add one. You might already have enough space that you don't have to add. So instead, why don't we just say, hey, you gotta, when you go through this process of, you know, getting the permit, you have to justify that you're not gonna have this.
I guess my question is for residential dwellings now, what are we considering adequate parking? What, what is that already? Are we saying is, you know, because I, I live alone and I have a two-and-a-half-car garage. And I can park two vehicles outside of my garage easily. So, but I don't have four vehicles myself. So, but I know that there are other people that have a single garage that they could park one vehicle in and one vehicle out. And between the husband, the wife and two children, teenage children, whatever, they've got four vehicles, but can only handle two. So now they're parking, they're getting creative with their parking. So what, I mean, for me, if we don't have a, if we don't have something established already for the residential homes. Then I don't think we should be establishing something for the ADUs. And I'm not saying that we shouldn't have something established for the residential homes. I'm saying we've got to be consistent there. We can't require it for one if we're not requiring it for the other.
Then we're not addressing that type of scenario in this zone, are we?
The, the parking ratios discussion will be coming not, not too shortly from now. And I would envision, most communities do have a minimum number of off-street parking spaces required. For single-family, two-family, and usually that can be met with both the garage parking and the driveway parking. And usually it's two vehicles is the most typical metric that I see. And so that's to try and account for both extremes that you just outlined. We can't predict for the five-vehicle household, but we don't also need to predict for just the single-person household. Um, so that's most often what I've seen. And so what I would envision is if we wanted to have a parking requirement for the accessory dwelling unit. That it would be the same as what the requirement is for a regular single-family or two-family home. But they'd have to accommodate the two additional vehicles within their driveway. If that makes sense.
Outside parking of campers and boats and stuff right now in the city or?
You know, the code, there's some, there's some things with that. I don't have it summarized by.
We've been allowing a camper unit parked next to the house, not out front or in the driveway. Probably will address it to get a little.
So you've got that where you can't do it out in front of the house, but now you're talking about allowing this maybe out in front of the house. This ADU, I don't, I don't like this ADU. I don't like it, especially downtown. You've already got parking issues down there. Whether you want to admit it or not, and if you start adding residential spaces to the back of some of the stores, which probably could. Like I said, you already got parking issues. It's gonna get worse.
Wrong, but only, this would only be allowed in a residential, residential zone.
Yeah, we're talking about a second potential unit on a vast majority of the. Single-family neighborhoods throughout New London.
When you're with a single-family, people live in that neighborhood also, and I've also brought up the point. People that don't, aren't from here and coming in by properties do look all around New London. They live here, they don't care. I got the same feeling with rental properties. You're in a single-family residential and you start bringing in rentals in there, they don't have a vested interest in the buildings and stuff so much. I think, I just don't think that residences are gonna like that. ADU in their backyard. I think there's gonna be pushback. I want to be single-family, I want to be single-family. Now you're gonna hear this traffic noise coming in, going. It's not gonna be the quiet little residential neighborhood. My opinion, I don't like this.
I think a lot of, I think a lot of people are looking at ADUs for the purpose of their. Children's starter families or for their parent care. Their parents, you know, they don't want them, they want them to still have some semblance of individuality. And independence, but they want them nearby because they're needing a little bit more. Assistance, whether it's a starter family needing to get their feet underneath them. Or, you know, my dad needs to be closer kind of thing.
Agree with that, but wasn't there something in here about non-related parties with rentals?
Yeah, it could be a related or a non-related.
So you, so I wouldn't have, if it's related, I understand that. If it's non-related, then I got an issue. But eventually, like Belinda brought up, the elderly parent passes on, then what are you gonna do with that? Then it's probably gonna go to non-related.
It could, yeah.
You know.
Or I could sell and move and now I've. Well, no, well, no, I mean, I'm just saying that it would be.
Somebody else that needs that.
Somebody else would buy the house and they might not need the ADU in the way that I did. So, and so I understand what you're saying, but I also see that people that are looking at ADUs, that's primarily why they're looking at them these days. I wouldn't, I personally would not want to put one on my property to rent to somebody. I, I just, I.
But this does allow that.
It would, yeah.
And I, some people tout it as going to help. All of our housing problems and it's not. It's expensive to build these types of things, whether it's remodeling your existing home or building a separate structure. Just for example, I live in Madison and it's been permitted for a lot of years and I think there's less than ten in the whole city. So it's not like this is taking off overnight. I think it's just an option that you can have that's out there for people to take advantage of. In particular, in situations where like, you know, your parent has to come back and live with you. And, and just tries to provide a little bit more flexibility in that space. Ultimately, if, if this body feels like this is not the route they want to go, that's fine. That's the direction that we need. But I, we tried to develop a set of standards to say, you know, it does have some requirements around it. But it also, we're proposing to allow it a, as drafted right now anyway, so.
I think it's important that we have it. Because otherwise, we're right back to where we are now. Act reacting to something that should have been taken care of, you know, already. Like Melinda, hopefully we get to talking about parking in the front lawn.
I agree. I think this is something that is in the, the, it maybe doesn't affect us now yet, but in the future it will. And I do think that, I mean, if it is in other bigger cities and stuff like that. I mean, again, we're, we would have to come back and redo this whole zoning thing again. If we had the request from someone to do something like this, we would have to add something to our zoning code again. And it's just, that's what we're trying to eliminate is having this as comprehensive as possible.
Well, and I guess I need clarification too. If we don't put this in there, then we, then somebody could come in and ask for conditional use. No? Okay.
So. What, even if we, so, so the difference is that what we've drafted as far as an accessory dwelling unit, the, the definition and the land use. That's gonna live in the code regardless of whether we're permitting it or not permitting it. To your point, we want to leave it in there for, for future use if it's needed. But in the table, the big land use table, and then it says permitted or conditional, that's where right now it says. An accessory dwelling units are permitted in the single-family and the, the mixed residential, low and medium. And so that's the direction we need, like, is that, are you all comfortable with that? If you're not, then we can remove that or we can modify these standards in any way we need to. Uh, but. We need to make decisions related to this and other things as we move forward because we're gonna have, you know, more public rounds of review and, and draft editing. And we all collectively as a body sort of need to feel comfortable with what we have. So any other opinions on this topic, whether for or against?
I just want to point out, I mean, you would consider, and we've talked about this missing middle housing. This is probably considered part of that missing, missing, missing middle housing realm of things, would assume.
It absolutely is.
And then number two, to Jeff's point, have you ever seen or is there a provision that? To have the accessory dwelling unit, it has to be that the, the owner has to be on-premise. To get away from Jeff's scenario of a landlord just putting on an ADU on the property, just get another renter in.
I think he had that language in there, didn't he already that?
Yeah.
Have to be the primary resident.
The landowner has to live.
That would be a little more comforting, but yeah.
Correct, so that the landowner either lives in the accessory dwelling unit or they live in the, that regular house. But they're there on the site. And we'll have to, you know, have the attorney weigh in on, on that being perfectly, you know, legal and everything. I've done it in, in a couple of other communities, so, and they were comfortable with it.
So then do we need to put some language in there that down the road that this, this property can never be used as a rental then? Because what if somebody, primary resident moves on and somebody thinks, oh, I'm gonna buy this, I'll have two rentals.
That's, that's.
Or does it, I mean, can we do that? I don't know.
No. No, we cannot.
I don't think we have the legal right to tell somebody they can't buy a piece of property and do that. Once it's, once it's established, it, like you said, once it's established, now we run into that risk. But for the person to get the permit to put the ADU, they would have to be the primary.
Right.
They would have to live there to get the permit.
Okay, so I guess you need to clarify something for me. So say that. You have a primary owner and you add an ADU and you put your parents in that ADU, okay? And then the parents pass away and the landowner wants to sell it. The person that buys it has to be the primary owner there. And then they can rent it out to anyone, or does it have to be? Not a relative then, or it can be anybody, or I'm, I'm not, I'm a little confused on that. As to what happens in the future, if someone has a, a property and has an ADU, everything is great. You know, the permits have been given, but what happens when they sell it? What can happen and what can't happen?
You have to sell it as a unit.
Right.
Be sold as one single property, both units would be on there.
Okay.
As written in the, the draft text, it says that that new owner has to live in one of the two units. To rent out the other side.
So the, the, the thing saying that someone would buy it and rent out both places would not happen.
According to the regulations that we're putting in place. Could that possibly happen? Yes, it could in theory, right? Because someone, the, the city isn't tracking every single sale.
I get it, yeah.
And so we do open up the door for that to be a possibility, right? David isn't tracking every, every sale transaction and what people are using their house for. But you do have, at least if you find out that a different situation, you know, someone's abusing the rules, if you will. You do have the language at least to fall back on in the code that would say exactly what we just talked about. You need to own, or you need to live in this property and, and you could rent out the other one, so.
I think when, when I think about this, I maybe ran the red flag up the pole too quick. Because basically we've got a lot of ADUs in this town already with older Victorian homes, upstairs, downstairs apartments. Wolf River Avenue has got them, Wyman Street's got them, all kind of basically. So I guess when I think about that, we're really not changing much. I just guess, I think some of us thought, and I know I thought. Now we're gonna take these small ranch-style homes and put a little unit in the backyard and that's gonna add extra parking. But if it's an elderly parent or something like that, it's probably gonna be one extra car. So after all this debate, and I think about it, maybe it's not such a big, big deal. Belinda, you kind of agree with me or?
I, I, I don't, yeah, we, we already have this going off.
Yeah.
All over the place. We really do. And, and I mean, I think about my, you know, my home, my property. Corner lot, double, double lot. It would be pretty easy for me to put an ADU out back and still be able to have, you know. The parking and all that stuff there. Is that going to impact my neighbors? Yeah, if I was renting it out to, you know, whoever, but that already happens. The house next door to me is, is a, a house that was converted into two different. It's all over the place. We've got, we've got a house in town that has how many? It's got three different, four different addresses in the one house. One, two, three, four different addresses in one building. And it's, it's a little weird, but it's already happening all over the place. And I don't think we're getting a whole lot of, you know, disturbance calls or anything like that. But I do see parking as an issue, whether they're ADU units or single-family units. That's the bigger issue that I see out there, so.
And in those cases, they're probably zoned and considered two-family residential.
They, the zoning does allow for that, yes, where they're at, you know.
Where this is happening on a single-family residential lot with an accessory dwelling.
Right, right. A lot of, what I, what I'm seeing, what we're already seeing is it's within the same house. Somebody's basement or their, their upstairs, you know, it's a, it's a two-level home and they. There's a family dwelling on the first level and a separate family. There's a family dwelling on the first level and a separate family dwelling on the second level, happens all over the place. I can't think of a residential area in town where it's not already happening. Now, the ADU units, this, as a separate unit. That's not happening all over the place, that's, that's not occurring, so, yeah.
I think we did one of those on House Road. Where.
Yeah, it, it's possible over there, yeah.
Built a place for their mother next door. Or mother, father.
Down House Road, or was it up on um, I believe D? I, I think that was on, on D, uh, north of town.
There was a unit or addition to.
Addition to a house, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we will address the parking, but um, retain sort of the approach that we have at this point. Yourself of this discussion. Uh, home occupations, another uh, sort of accessory use, um, that's most commonly seen in a residential neighborhood. These are low, small scale in terms of operation, uh, but there's. In the code right now, not a lot of clear cut definition and standards. What we aim to do is, is provide staff in particular, a little bit more in that space. In particular, trying to maintain the residential character of the neighborhood, but still allow these to take place. Cause people work from their garage or their back shed or their home office or whatever, you know, and these are happening all over the place. The, the crux of what we'd like to ask you today though is um. The, the existing code does not require sort of a license type of operation for these to occur. So basically, we don't know where home occupations are today, where they exist on the ground. That's fine until there's a complaint or an issue and someone says, well, you know, what are they allowed to do? How are they allowed to, you know, do this thing in their house or sell whatever out of their garage? And then Dave gets in a tough spot and he doesn't know what was, you know, we never approved anything, right, from the city side? So there's pros to having sort of a license program where we have these things documented. We understand what was approved, what we were all in agreement with at that point in time. And we're still proposing that that would happen at the staff level, it wouldn't come to you guys per se. Um, the con on that is obviously the administrative time that's associated with something like that. And so, uh, Dave and Chad talked a little bit about this, you know. Uh, I don't know if you guys want to talk specifically how you feel in one direction or the other. Uh, but these are the types of things where. We found success in having documentation when you run into future issues. And if, if you require a license or a permit or something to that effect, that's where you get that documentation. But it does come with limited staff hours, uh, they're already limited hours, um, and, and that kind of thing. So maybe Chad and Dave, I don't know where your slant on.
I think we went round and round, back and forth, pros and cons, you know, whether this is something we want to do. And I think it's, it's a matter of, this, this is something that happens in other communities, so I think it's worth it to discuss. Um, I don't know how my home, and we don't know, home occupations aren't there, you know?
I think we should leave it alone. Because otherwise, the people are gonna feel that we're trying to control their life. I mean, like, some people make jigs at their house. Are they gonna have to get a license? To make their jigs, can they only make them from eight in the morning till seven at night? Cause they might make a little noise. Now, I, I think it'd be too controlling on the residents of this city.
I feel the same way. What have you experienced as far as uh, different cities? Uh, again, the things that can happen, things that, how it went well or whatever.
The, the crux of this is there's probably, just making up a number, a hundred people out there doing home occupations right now. That we don't even know of, that it's not an issue.
Right.
It's the one that becomes an issue that they're um, doing something obnoxious outside. Or there's, you know, making a lot of, of ruckus, you know, at different hours that causes neighborhood concerns. Um, they're out there with their power tools, uh, you know, at different hours of the night, whatever it may be. Um, that's usually where these regulations come into play. And if you do have a, you know, a documented, like, this person is agreeing to these set of standards. And at least you have something to fall back on in that complaint based situation. I, I totally understand what you're saying from the other side, cause there's probably those.
We already got a noise order.
Right, yeah.
You know, so why establish something else?
To me, well, it doesn't make sense, I'm sorry. I think on the other side of that, though, I see the, the need, because if you do have somebody with a whole business. And, okay, so he is complying with the noise ordinance, but he's stacking, say he's making boards and selling them. And he's stacking them up, so it's prohibiting the neighbors. You know, and then they start to complain, that's where I think you're getting at, that this is a tool for the city. Then they have a, have an actionable item to go towards that resident, because they're not complying, because they have a home business.
Correct.
I, I don't think we're seeking out to prohibit people from working at home. It's the ones that are gonna cause an issue and it gives us a mechanism to control that.
I already, we've had that too, where the neighbors came in.
What, what?
They're all over us because uh, somebody in construction, I think, was working out of their garage. Starting at seven in the morning, running the saws and. Yeah, I don't know if they sued or.
Go ahead.
I've got one example of up on the southwest corner of Oshkosh and Beacon. Got the house right on the corner of the next house next door. That gentleman, four or five years ago, got a hold of me to sell his house, moved out of the area. He was upset at that time. He had a regular job, but then he built up two or three car garage in the backyard, tall enough to put a lift in. Started doing breaks and auto work for friends and family, not advertising or nothing, but had something to do. Apparently, he was stepped on by somebody in the city here under ordinances or something. I don't, you know, I didn't know any of you guys back then that well or anything, but that's just an example. If, is that something that you would have wanted to see before the guy got upset and did what he did? Or should have he come to the city and said, can I do this? And you would have said yes or no? There's pros and cons to regulation, and maybe in that case, he wouldn't have spent the money and done what he did. I mean, it was definitely a residential area, but.
Buying pallets and selling stuff off pallets is a big thing right now, and that creates a lot of people stopping by, a lot of inventory. I haven't heard, we, we, in the past had one situation come up, I remember definitely all the details on that. But it does create traffic to.
I think one of the interesting points of that is that if, if there was any type of license. That, that the one percent that's abusing it, um, has issues and issues and issues and issues. I'm assuming at one point we can revoke that, and then they're not supposed to do it anymore. Whereas if we don't have a licensing thing, they can just keep on going. Sure, we can give them a citation a hundred and fifty times, but they can just keep on going until they get sick of the citations. Uh, so I think that was one aspect uh, for consideration. Again, we went round and round with this one, uh, there's pros and cons both ways.
And it's something honestly that you could test out, right, if you wanted to. We, we could say no license right now, but it's written into the code, so you could use that provision. Um, in the future in terms of, uh, if you just made a simple amendment and you wanted to do a license in the future, you could. On the flip side, we could do it where you require a license when we adopt this new code. And you test it out for a year or two and you say this isn't working and you change it. Uh, that, those are possibilities here, so, um. I guess what I'm getting at is whatever we decide, it's not forever, it doesn't have to be forever. But I do, we do collectively need some sort of direction on which way we want to go.
I mean, Dave, do you, do you believe that you would be. Able to use that mechanism if it was available more than, you know, going on.
Few complaints since I've started and like I said, the idea by. Character of the neighborhood, so you put some things in place that says, hey. When this comes to a point where it's starting to affect the people around you, that's where we're gonna put the limits to. On the scope of what you're doing there, so you don't have fifteen delivery trucks coming during the day. Said noise, odor.
So I, I'm just gonna be.
In every municipality I've worked at, they've had that, so I was kind of, kind of surprised it didn't happen here, but uh.
So I'm just gonna be honest here and say that I'm not exactly sure how I feel about all of this. Um, I'm with Bernie, I don't think we should be dictating to people as to whether or not they can do what they want. Or, you know, we've got all kinds of people that are doing crafts and making jigs and, and, and um. Separating out their plants and selling plants at, at, at fairs and they're. Also some, we've got these little pop-up breadbox houses going on, dessert places all over the place here in New London now. The pallet people, you know, people that are trying it out. Do they have to come and get a license because they bought a pallet to see if this was gonna work for them now? Uh, you know, I, I'm not sure that I, the, the license thing, I'm. I think that we need to have a home occupation policy for home-based businesses. Licensing those businesses, I'm really, we're, we're not gonna be successful in catching everybody. We're just not going to be. You know, my mom used to make all kinds of craft items and jams and jellies and pickled eggs and all this kind of stuff. And she would sell produce from her garden. You know, she'd set up a table out front and sell pro, and people would just come by and stick money in her can and, you know. Never had a license, but it also did not disrupt the neighborhood. Her neighbors got excited when she started putting her produce out. You know, they'd come over and buy her fresh stuff to make their salsa. So I, I just feel like we're opening up a can of worms with this licensing stuff.
The only thing that I see that if we, if we do it, how are we going to, um, how are we going to get the people? That are already doing home occupations to come in and, and to do this? I mean, I mean, I, I'm just an example of dog licenses. You don't even, you know, we don't always get all the people to come in and do that. I mean, I, I mean, I, I think it's a good idea that we have some kind of a record of, of who has a home business. So that in case there is an issue that Dave has something to go back to. But I, I mean, I'm not sure how we're going to be, how we're going to implement it. I mean, we can say on our Facebook page, oh, if you have a home occupation, you need to come in and get a license. There's no guarantee that they're going to, and so how are we going to monitor that and make it uh. That everyone is doing it, I mean.
I think Ben made that point, we are not gonna capture a hundred percent of population with every, every whole, everything.
Right, so I mean.
And when a home occupation starts competing though, with someone who's. Put up a storefront and is paying all those kind of taxes. And Mister whomever it's in his garage fixing cars, making a living. Out of there, you know, there is.
When you become, when you're hobbyist and you come up.
Yes, yeah, you know, when it's not a home hobby, like Melinda's mom or. You know, my mom did it for years and I believe some of the neighbors still are, but.
Well, I don't think it necessarily, necessarily is a home hobby. I mean, it could be a home occupation that's a full-time.
Well, yeah, like the beauty shops used to be in the home.
Isn't there an ordinance that says you, you earn a certain amount of money from a home business, that you have to have a license? Say you're, you're selling insurance or something and, and say eighty percent of your income comes from that business and it's made you all. So I thought there was a, a law against that.
By a state law?
Oh, I'm, I was sure that there was ordinance or something about that.
I don't think we have that here.
Oh, there, isn't there something that has that?
State statute. I don't, I don't think.
I think locking up a can of worms. Making people come to get a license, you, I, you gotta get a permit for hot water heater, you gotta get permit for all this other stuff in town. Half the people don't do it anyway, so doing this is. I think we're just making more problems while we're doing. Might as well live in Russia.
Well, I think we could, we could, I mean, if, I think it's gonna be up to Chad and Dave. I mean, to see what, what, how it will benefit their jobs. I mean, is it make it easier? Is it make it more cumbersome? Um, I think that we could probably do without it right now yet and then. And then see how it goes, I, I don't know, I just think that. If it makes your job easier to have a license, and so that you have uh, some, something to, to work with. I, I say we do it, um, but yet to make it. Something they have to do, we're not gonna get everybody in compliance with it.
Richie, I'm, I, I agree with you. I mean, the hobbyists out there to capture, like you, you said. I think it's kind of ridiculous. You, you turned that hobby into an LLC. Now you're talking a business, now you're talking an all out business that maybe should be in a brick and mortar.
So maybe, so maybe we. Um, word it that way, that if you are operating a. An LLC business, something that you're claiming on your taxes and doing that kind of stuff, then. If it requires you to claim it on your taxes, which I think is, what is it, six thousand dollars a year? Then you need to, I'm not sure about that number though, I could be way off. Um, but if it requires that. Then we should be looking for. Some, I don't even know if it needs to be a license, but we should be made aware of it. They, you need to notify the city that you're operating this business in some way, shape or form.
Do we really get a lot of complaints? I don't think so, do we?
Maybe you said we get.
We get, we get some.
Pardon?
We get some, so I think at a minimum, I think we need some parameters of what a home business should be, maybe. Maybe more so what it shouldn't be. You know, keep the residential, like, say, character of the neighborhood, but, you know, licensing, yeah, it'd be more work on my part, but.
So you would have, if it was just a hobby in your garage, you would have to get a license for that?
No, what I'm saying is we had some direction on what we've maybe don't allow a home business to be. You know, we're kind of starting to take over the neighborhood. Um, licensing would be obviously more work on our part, so. That component, you know, wouldn't necessarily have to be a place for us to enforce this.
I'm generally hearing no license.
I think so.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
At this point, if we have to revisit, we will, but okay, at this point.
So probably already answered the questions related to this one, short-term residential rentals. What this is, is basically the Airbnb situation, the VRBO. Uh, it is different than like a hotel or boarding house, bed and breakfast. Uh, they're a little bit more in the commercial space. The short-term residential rental is. Where the dwelling unit, the principal dwelling unit, you typically think of your home as being used as a rental. Um, as that Airbnb, um, on a, on a, um, temporary basis. State law basically says that short-term residential rentals have to be permitted and anything that's defined by the state. Uh, by the building code as a dwelling unit, meaning someone can live there, there's a kitchen, electric, um, plumbing, all that kind of stuff. So, um, the state basically says we need to allow it. But it does provide the ability for local municipalities to provide a guidance or framework. In which these things can take part in their community and for, and. In particular, one of those is a license to operate. Um, and so there's no existing standards right now, uh, within the, the New London zoning code. We would at a minimum like to add in, you know, this as a land use. And have um, some component of requirements to minimally sort of protect the neighborhood like we talked about. Uh, again, you know, no changes to the outside appearance of the site, onsite parking, property management, um, those types of things. The license component is the one that we were asking about. And it sounds like from our last um, discussion, that's probably not where we're gonna wanna go. But I'd like to at least ask the question to you all, um, do we want to require a license for this? Um, or do we uh, want to allow it to take place? And basically if there's a nuisance, an issue, then um, we at least have an ordinance in place to fall back on. Um, but again, we're not gonna be actively tracking these types of things. And my understanding, Chad, is there's already some of this happening in the community today. So the community isn't tracking it today, so a license would be a new administrative element. Um, that we can choose to do or we cannot choose to do, and so just like to get your direction on that.
Again, I think licensing more than than what's needed.
Okay.
Man. We don't do it currently. You have problems with that as well, Mr. Prince?
Not so far, no.
This might be an issue though, come when we have the Packer uh or the the Packer, the NFL draft that's going on. I know I've heard a lot of people saying I'm going up to my cottage up north and I'm renting out my house or whatever and but I don't know if that's something that we.
This is. Yeah, he's done every year.
This is a bigger issue in more tourist dominated communities um where especially like like communities, like they really want to hyper focus in on this because they want to be able to have residents who actually live there, not just people who come in for a weekend kind of thing. It's not as big of an issue here. Uh, we want to have at least provisions in your code uh to fall back on and to be compliant with state statutes, but the license component is optional and I'm if if we don't want to do it, that's that's perfectly fine.
Do we need to be concerned though about anything that if people are doing that, that there is, that they have some like safety protocol that they have in their home and um you know, I don't know how that, you know, is this.
Yeah, what's what's as a city, what's our life?
Yeah, what's our, you know.
Is there anything in state statute that requires municipality regulate certain aspects of it? I don't think so.
No, and then likewise, they to get registered on Airbnb and VRBO, you do have to register with the state.
Okay. Then that kind of takes it off the um, the local stuff.
Yeah, so city's not tracking it, but the state at least is. Are they doing inspections? I I don't know the answer to that from the state side. I doubt it, but.
You hear this up by Lambo Field because every they're they're scooping up all those houses and they're they're changing the makeup of the neighborhoods. You know, you have a lot of those residents that have lived there all the time. A lot of this, you know, short term rentals going on. We don't have that here. And this is a totally different market for those type of things, so.
And just to kind of a little bit of a, a personal side note on that, um when I bought my house, it was in my mortgage agreement that I was not allowed to Airbnb my house. It was not allowed. And the insurance, when I went to get the insurance, it was a question, will you Airbnb? And I'm like, well, the mortgage company says I can't. So no. So those aspects are covered with the mortgage lenders and with your insurance companies. So
Depends upon the type of loan.
Yeah, yeah.
But that'd be interesting, does does that conflict with what you just said with state statutes?
So is it written into the covenants for your property? Is that where that?
It was my mortgage. It was my mortgage lender was part of it was.
Depends upon the type of loan you get. You can't use that for rental or Airbnb or short term, anything like that. You have to be the primary resident.
As this, as a person taking out the mortgage, but does, wouldn't that mean that she could turn around and still do an Airbnb in her house even if she had the mortgage? I I don't understand.
My mortgage lender, it was part of, it was within the mortgage terms.
Yeah, I guess I.
The way you can do anything like that is to pay cash or to have a conventional loan. If you do any kind of USDA, FHA, VA, that's strictly prohibited. You don't want your lender to find out about it if you do, because they can terminate your mortgage.
Let's not license it and stay out of that space.
That's a fair point. Okay, my, I think this is the last one on my list. A little bit more on the nonconforming situations. We talked a little bit about what that means before. Basically, anything that does not that exists out there today in terms of a structure or parcel, a use, that does not uh meet the requirements or the standards of the code. Right now, all of nonconforming situations are sort of grouped together. And this uh older provision is very, very common across the United States in older codes. It says cha- it limits the change of that property up to fifty percent of the total property value at the time it became nonconforming, meaning that all right, you have a nonconforming situation, you cannot invest in that property. Well, you can invest in that property only up to a certain threshold. And determining what that threshold is, as you can imagine, is very, very difficult because um, when it became nonconforming is very difficult to track down. And um that can be something that's almost impossible to enforce because we're like, all right, in nineteen fifty, they established zoning and they created this six foot setback that they're not meeting. You would have to track that down in order to enforce this. The theory behind it basically is that these things would go away over time if we made them nonconforming and you couldn't invest in them. The reality is they really haven't done that. And so one strategy we've used in a lot of communities is to make nonconforming structures, lots and sites legal conforming through the adoption of the new code, meaning what's out there today, what exists today is fine to stay, it's fine to be reinvested in. There's no more of this percentage based formula as a cloud to that situation. Now, anything you do new, whether it's an addition or you know, some other new component of your property, that needs to meet the new standards of the zoning ordinance. But we're saying continue to use your property, continue to reinvest in your property. And that's something we would like to see as a city, and that's something that we found great success in um with uh this approach. That the slight deviation or difference from that is the nonconforming land use situation. So meaning what the property is actually being used for. Uh, an example is uh maybe there's a small corner shop um in a residential neighborhood that's been rezoned to residential, but it's still a continuing uh commercial um shop. And it has the wrong zoning on it today. We eventually want to see uh that become a residential property. It's been zoned residential for a long time. That is a nonconforming use. We are proposing to retain the rules in terms of recommending uh those nonconforming uses eventually go away. We continue to call them nonconforming. And so they can continue, but basically if they cease operation, they have to go away. And um there's a pretty limit, uh uh more limits on the modification repairs and maintenance. So if you have the structure lot in sight, we're sort of handling that a little bit differently than the land use. Because if you think about it, that original provision that was created was thinking, all right, these things are gonna go away over time. Well, if it's physically built out there, it doesn't change very often. But if it's a land use, maybe a business coming in and out, that changes more frequently. And so that's why we sort of separate these two things, and that's why we propose the approach we do. We want you to feel comfortable with this approach, ask questions if you have them. Uh, but this is something we've uh done successfully in a lot of communities. Um, it not only sort of eases the transition into the new code, but it also provides uh flexibility for reinvestment in a lot of the structures that we already have out there today. And uh and eliminates a very confusing uh time for Dave to try and track down, when did this property become nonconforming? And how much value have they added since that point in time? So I wanted to outline that for you. Does anybody have any questions about this? Uh, understand it. Um, are you comfortable with it?
I do have a question about the nonconforming structures, lots and sites.
Yes.
Um, I know that um there was a house on Wapaka Street that um had a fire and had to be completely redone, except was not allowed to be because it was nonconforming. They couldn't that the house needed to be like, it was basically totaled and had to be redone.
Yeah.
But they couldn't get the permits to rebuild there because of the setbacks, the front setbacks. So if another house goes down on Wapaka Street right over here, right over here, are would they now be able to rebuild under this? Because we would be changing that, the requirement for the front setbacks. That house had to be demolished and and then they were not allowed to rebuild.
So the proof is on the property owner to say, this is where my property was and the structure, where the structure was on the property. But you are allowed to rebuild via a fire or an act of God in that existing footprint as where you are today.
Okay, so that would no longer be an issue on Wapaka Street. That was a little heartbreaking for that family.
Could you restate what you just said? What did you restate what you just said?
So if you come to the city and you say, I want to rebuild my house and it was in this location, it's on you to prove where that actually was. With the amount of air photography that we have in Google Earth and those types of things, it's a lot easier nowadays to prove where your setbacks were and all those things. Back in the day, it was a little bit more difficult. But essentially, it's not on the city to say, all right, yeah, you had, you were three feet from the side yard line. It's on the property owner to say that. But if there was a fire or an act of God, um basically, you can rebuild in the exact footprint that you have today. If you prove to the city that that was the footprint in which you were on your lot as it stood before that accident.
Even if it doesn't meet the setback, then you can go back to the original footprint and really?
You can go back to the footprint of where it stands today. Yes.
I always.
Cause any of the, pretty much, pretty much on the new one, yeah, cause because pretty much any of the houses over there on Wapaka Street, if something, if they burn to the ground, they, the way things stand now, they are not allowed to rebuild because of the setbacks.
Cause that's over fifty percent of increasing the value of that nonconforming situation.
Yeah, and and it's, it would be heartbreaking for someone to lose their house and be told, yeah, you own this property now, but you can't build up. It is now a vacant lot. You need to destroy this house and fill it in. Cause that is what happened to a property owner over there. About ten years ago, maybe.
And there's been a, a state law change in particular related to the fire and act of God situation where we do need to comply with that side of the state statutes, which says we do need to do that. So that's baked into this provision. Um, what we've done is sort of expand it a little bit to not only just structures, but lots and sites. So we're trying to allow what's out there to continue to be reinvested in and and maintained and hopefully flourish for a long time. Uh, so before we end tonight, are there anything else from your review of part two that you'd like to, or part one, I should say, uh that you'd like to talk about? Uh, if you haven't had a chance to get all the way through it and you feel like you're going to in the next couple of weeks or months or whatever, feel free to talk with Chad and Dave and they can communicate with that with us. I I just wanted to provide a forum tonight if anybody did have anything.
I wanted to bring up the small wind energy system.
Yes.
The provision in there is from three hundred to a hundred KW. Could we just prohibit those? I don't see a hundred KW windmill being proficient with all the things that the utility has to do. If they have to put that back on the grid, it would be similar to a solar system where we would have to do an islanding test and there's a lot of um tariff work because I would have to, you know, that renewable energy rider that I am. I would like to just see that prohibited. I don't think that three hundred or a hundred KW system. And my other concern is I had a couple of people at a conference tell me that they had them in their city and they were working to ban them as well. It's not a energy requirement, but if you have a a windmill um and the sun starts to set, it causes a strobing to the residents in the house. So if you have your windmill is in the right spot and your neighbor, say, at an adjacent lot and the sun, sun starts to set and that's spinning really slow. Even if you pull the blinds, you're gonna get a stroll effect in your house and it drives people crazy.
I, we can certainly look into that. There are pretty strict statutory requirements in the solar and wind space and what we as the local community can regulate. So we will look into that and see what our possibilities are in respect to the small scale one. I.
Cause I did talk to the Public Service Commission. If it is a city ordinance, the Public Service Commission has no jurisdiction over the city ordinance. So they don't prohibit us from prohibiting minority.
Okay.
You talk about that strobing effect and stuff that also affects epilepsy.
It also affects what?
Epilepsy.
Well, yeah.
I mean, it's it's far reaching, but it was something that was brought to mind. I never even had considered that. But if your neighbor puts one up in the sun setting and it's the right time of year, um and it's your bedroom window, uh it could be real concerning and then you're gonna have no mechanism to prevent that.
I recently had a complaint about that for uh outside Christmas lights.
What was the complaint though?
Uh flashing Christmas lights.
Oh, flashing, okay, yeah.
So I will definitely explore that. I can't guarantee we can say absolutely no. Um, based on what I've seen in this, in the statutes is that there's more on the saying yes side of things, uh but we can definitely work with the attorney and say, you know, maybe we do get rid of the small scale and the large scale is the only one that's permitted and it's only permitted in an agricultural zoning district and limit it. Um, we can try and do that.
Cause it's already pretty limited. I mean, a hundred KW is a pretty small.
Right. Yeah, we're talking about like a personal, yeah, really small thing. No, that's, that's very helpful. Thank you. All right. Well, I appreciate everybody staying a little bit longer and making a special meeting here tonight. And that was really valuable to have you all in, or to, for me to be here in person and talk with you all. Thank you. And um we'll be back in the coming months to continue this discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So if you wanna set up a meeting to meet with either one or both of us, we can.
Hey, review upcoming agenda items.
And Ben coming forward, were we coming back next month again with another um presentation round for joining? Was that your plan?
I think it depends on uh what we feel in turn, to be determined, I guess. Uh, it's either next month or the month after.
Hey, review next meeting date is February twenty seventh. Any questions? Hope we make it. Hey, next on agenda.
I got one thing next Thursday night at five o'clock. After five event at the vault. It's the new pool hall downtown. Pizza from Jolly Rogers, five to seven. I'd ask you all to join me down there.
Next Thursday?
Next Thursday. You should have gotten a personal invitation.
I did.
And you. So be nice to see you all down there. Starts at five, ends at seven, six.
The the date.
The sixth, yeah, Thursday, the sixth.
Looking for a motion during the meeting?
I'm making a motion. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded.